We must use their names, otherwise they will not be allowed to participate in the discussion. Attendees will join in listening mode. They can click the raise hand button if they wish to speak. The chair will call on those who have raised their hands in the order in which they were raised. We will no longer be using the Q and A function, but you can call in if you do not have microphone access on your device. And all questions should be directed through the chair. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. We will be allowing public comment at intervals throughout the meeting, and you do that again by raising your hand as an attendee. And all of our supporting materials are on the town website unless otherwise noted. In terms of members, please raise your hand and I'll recognize you when, or I may call on you to speak at certain intervals. And please direct all comments through the chair. And speak clearly and avoid sharing your screen as it will be captured by the recording. Thank you for all of that, and we will turn to the agenda. And we have a couple of extra announcements. And otherwise, I don't think that there were any other changes. There is no town manager's report is essentially throughout the rest of the agenda. And I'll turn it over to you, Libby. Oh, I'm sorry. I actually have one very important thing that I forgot. Tonight is Rita Higgins' last meeting with us as a select board member. And it's been great having you with us, Rita, for three years. You've done a phenomenal job. And we wish that you were sticking around, but we know that you have some other pressing items to attend to. And thank you for staying on for all of this extra time during this incredibly challenging time in the world. And we will reconvene in person soon to give you flowers and cake.
Thank you, Dawn. It's been something, or three years in the past couple of months. You know, I think of the ups and downs. I really appreciate working with everyone in the town and my fellow board members. It's not been easy over the past couple of months, and I think that, you know, everyone's been trying their best. And I really, I really appreciate that, and I look forward to watching these and being an attendee as opposed to a participant, although I will miss the packets. And again, getting a chance to sort of know what's going on. So, thank you all.
Should I go ahead with the announcements?
Yes, please.
Okay. So first off, we've got the announcement that this meeting is being video and audio recorded. And next, we have an update on the census, and I think Martha Turk will come on to give us that.
Hi, Martha.
Hi. Thank you again for having me. I just wanted to put out some reminders about the impact of the census and why Nantucket's current response rate of just over 23% is a little bit concerning at this point. Everyone has the right to be counted in the census, every adult, every child, every neighbor, every student, every immigrant, every, everyone who makes Nantucket home. And even if you can't vote, filling out the census is a way to make your voice heard. By taking the census, you shape Nantucket's future because that voice helps determine how much federal funding comes to our community for the next 10 years. And you also help ensure that Nantucket has fair political representation from the State House to Congress. So whether it's putting money into schools and food assistance and health and emergency services and senior programs or protecting our communities, the census is a tool for good, so everybody needs to use it. Seasonal residents should complete the census too, to give an accurate picture of our community. If you call Nantucket home for any part of the year, please take the census. Even if your home is vacant as of April 1st, that's valuable information. Everyone can use their physical street address, not a P O box number, to take the census online or a census ID number if they've received their invitation and paper questionnaire. I've noticed an actual uptick to double-digit rates in the Tom Never Sconset tract this week, and I have a feeling that has a lot to do with the fact that we have our local census enumerators out in the field delivering forms. So that's a positive sign, but double digits isn't enough. So let's keep up the good work. I wanted to also announce our first public-facing census outreach activity. I'm really excited about this. The Complete Count Committee is collaborating with the Artists Association to sponsor a free family drop-in workshop at the Visual Arts Center on Amelia Drive on Saturday, June 20th, from 10 to noon. Participants in this Everyone Counts workshop will create and name wireface sculptures representing family members and community members. They'll be displayed in a group exhibit at a later date in an effort to inspire other people to take the census. Social distancing will be observed at the workshop, and all are welcome to come with a beach blanket to designate their family's workspace, and more details will be available on the Artists Association website. So pretty exciting to finally be able to interface with the community to talk about the census in a safe socially-distanced way. Looking forward to the June 20th event. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, as always, Martha.
Thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you, Martha. Next, we have an announcement about the annual town election. That is next Tuesday. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the high school. However, it is highly recommended that ballots be mailed in, and the information for that and instructions as to how to do that are on the town website. The annual town meeting, as hopefully everybody by now knows, is scheduled for Thursday, June 25th, at 5:00 p.m. at the high school. We are having two forums about it to explain how we are going to do it. The idea is to have a pared-down town meeting. We had our first forum yesterday. Not overly well-attended, but a few people joined in, and it's been recorded, so people can watch it later. The next one is next Thursday, the 18th, starting at 5:00 p.m. It is on Zoom webinar, and the instructions are on the town website. Lastly, oh, I should also mention quickly about the back-to-town meeting. The warrants are being mailed out, and there is a letter to voters going out, not with it in the same packet because it didn't work like that, but you'll probably get them separately and hopefully on the same day. But please be on the lookout for your warrant and this letter, and it will explain the town meeting a little bit. Erica?
I just wanted to note that I just got confirmation that they were both mailed out today.
Okay, great. So hopefully people will get them at the same time. Next, the Nantucket High School graduation car parade will be held this Saturday, June 13th, at 3:00. It is the homecoming route, and the police and fire vehicles will lead the parade, and it's going to be very boisterous, I think. The parade route will be decorated, and we hope that the community will really get out along the route. It's listed on the agenda here, and cheer on our 2020 graduates. So hopefully this is going to be a big thing. And the graduation itself, I think, hopefully as people know, will be broadcast on NCTV at 1:00 that day, Saturday, the 13th. I think that's it for my announcements.
Thank you. There is an announcement that was a press release that came out today that Jason has and is going to read.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yesterday, I reached out to the DA's office on the Cape asking if they would come on to the select board meeting tonight or next Wednesday to give us an update, and they sent a press release instead. This press release is not an update on the investigation. It is a press release on the process. And I just wanted to read that out. I just got it this afternoon. I sent it to town administration, to you, Dawn, and we can put it on the website. But I just wanted to read it right now, because I want the information that I have, I want everybody else to have, I want the community to have it. So this is from Tara Miltimore, Assistant District Attorney, Media Relations. She said, "In March 2018, the African Meeting House on Nantucket was defaced by graffiti. District Attorney O'Keefe said, quote, 'There are people on Nantucket who know what happened. I would hope they will come forward to help the investigation in this case, investigators in this case,' end quote. Nantucket citizens in possession of any information are encouraged to call the state police at 508-790-5799." We'll post this for that number. Second paragraph, "By way of background, Nantucket Police began the investigation, but in the summer of 2019, the Nantucket Police Department asked the DA's office to take over the investigation." The district attorney, sorry, the district attorney's office, through the trial court, requested that the sitting Barnstable grand jury be made into a statewide grand jury in order to hear Nantucket matter. The Cape and Islands Assistant District Attorney was deputized as an Assistant Attorney General in order to use the statewide grand jury in Barnstable. The newly-designated grand jury began to hear evidence on March 13th, 2020. A week later, the courts were closed in response to COVID-19. No new grand juries will be impaneled until at least September 11th, but sitting grand juries may now be brought back into court with COVID-19 procedures in place. The case remains under investigation by the grand jury in the Massachusetts State Police." And that's the press release, and I hope this goes on the website tonight or tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next, we're moving on to our COVID-19 weekly update. I don't know if there's, if any board members have any opening comments. I'd just like to make a little comment about how impressed I have been with our community members and their vigilance and following the guidelines, wearing the face masks, you know, really washing hands and keeping everybody safe. It's great to see that we're another three weeks without any new cases on the island, and we obviously have had a growth in population during that time period. So keep up the good work, everyone. Throughout this, we do have, we will have it open for any public questions, and we have a report from our Public Health Director.
Thank you, Dawn. One of the things that we definitely want to get out there is that the PCR testing is up and running. We are asking that if their employer, we have sent the press release out, I believe it came out today. I'll get that over to the chamber. We're going to get it out through all of our restaurant groups as well, and our lodging emails, our email blast, so keep an eye out for that. Basically, what it says is that if you're an employer that's willing to fund any of the testing as needed, there is a procedure and process set in place. We've already started testing some of this group. We've had over 70 tests already from this private group. These private group funding employers paying for their employees to be tested. The portico is always open for those who are showing symptoms. And so the PCR is up and running. For those who are looking for it, go to nantucket-ma.gov. Go to the COVID-19 button on the right, then go back to the left dropdown menu. Click on COVID-19 testing to get you to the PCR form. There is some funding available for high-priority individuals who cannot pay for themselves. And then we are also, I also received word that the serology testing received IRV approval on Thursday. So I'm waiting to hear back from the hospital on that end to see where the serology testing is moving forward. We are doing very well statewide. I want to echo Dawn's point that the townspeople, you have been amazing. And we really want to express our thanks for everything you've done. My team here and Kathy, John, Art, Taylor, and all my interns, Grace, Sky. We've been working round the clock trying to get all this out there. The police department has been really great. Libby, all of you have been really excellent in helping us. It's really heartening to see how this is going, and we are now, as Dawn said, three weeks without a new case. Let's keep it up. Keep vigilant, maintain your distancing, keep the masks on. I know they're frustrating. The masks are annoying to me. I get overheated as well. As you see, I'm probably already sweating. It is just, the heat is uncomfortable to me, but the masks are incredibly important. So please maintain that, and I think we're in good shape. The state today reported only 200, or this is yesterday, is only 267 cases, new cases. So that trend is still going down. We're keeping an eye. And we are now moving forward with the patio and the outside seating. There's the Economic Recovery Group that Leslie has been really great in helping us on all that. We connected yesterday on helping a lot of the, on how to do the process to make sure we're not getting in each other's way and get everyone open as soon as possible. And as far as everything else goes, I think we're in good shape. I think I'll just leave it at that. I'll leave it open for any questions that you may have, but it's, thank you. And let's keep up the good work and maintain the vigilance.
Roberto, did you mention Surfside Treatment Plant?
Oh, yes. Thank you. So we received our next batch of the sewage testing that also came back non-detect. So nobody is currently shedding the virus in the sewage testing, which is great news. So once again, we're going to keep monitoring that in every two-week intervals. Thank you, Libby, for the reminder.
Thank you.
Any questions on JSON? And then Kristi?
Roberto, what if you would, remind me, if we would have saw shedding, what does that tell us? That someone did have, they were positive, and they don't anymore, or they, remind me of what that means if there was shedding?
Is this in relation to the sewer, sewage treatment plant? All right. Yes, so if we're test, if somebody is shedding, it means they may not be showing the symptoms, but they are infected with COVID. So what we're finding out is through the literature that for those who may not know they have it, you are still releasing virus through your waist. So what shows up in a huge sewage treatment plant actually is many times about a week ahead of an actual outbreak. So that's part of that metrics discussion we've been having. The reason I haven't been able to give you anything solid this week, like I had originally promised last week, is because this new information, there's new information out there that we're able to plot, and I'm going to have to find a way to get this metric also into our group to help project any sort of illnesses, and it is great news. Once again, it only gets the people who have sewage going to the Surfside wastewater treatment plant. This is not, I do not believe it includes the Sconset Treatment Plant, and it does not include anyone on septic systems. But it is still a good representative population of the people who are on the island, about a third of the population of the island.
Thank you.
Kristi, then Matt?
Roberto, with the PCR testing, is that just testing if you're currently actively have the virus, or does it also test for antibodies?
The PCR testing, the PCR testing will only tell you if you currently have the virus, if you're creating, if you're shedding that virus as well. It unfortunately does not tell you if you have had it. That is the serology testing.
Matt?
I spoke to David Gray, I think it was last week. He explained to me that we are capturing some of the septic when it's brought into the plant, but that doesn't come in all that often. We're not doing Sconset. It would cost about 10 grand to add Sconset. The prices went up from what they originally were being charged, so it's more expensive now. Roberto is 100% correct. This is one of the better ways of predicting ahead of time. It's, and it is, you know, it's a pretty good way of doing it. It's pretty effective. It's, you know, some of the nerds that send me stuff continually thinking I'll read it all have said that this is one of the better ways to, you know, sort of see ahead, get a glimpse ahead. Some of the other stuff, serology, et cetera, is a little more of a look back and historical. And, you know, in some of the PCR testing, it doesn't help you if people don't have it and go in and don't do it on their own. So this is actually a very good thing. The sewer might be the best thing we're doing right now.
Yes. So that's actually great. Those three pieces of information are actually a very robust surveillance, just like Matt was saying. One is past, one is present, one is a couple of days into the future. And I'm probably going to see if I can get a T-shirt or something that says nerd on it, because I kind of agree with you, Matt. Those are amazing.
Okay, shall we move on to, do we want to go over the status of the emergency orders?
Sure. Sure. It's the next thing on the agenda. The Board of Health meeting on Thursday, we did rescind all orders except for number four, but orders 1 through 10. And so even number 10 is no longer active, so we are currently mirroring the governor's orders. We are on the governor's orders, so we're moving that way. As far as order number 11, the outdoor dining, we're still moving forward. There's been a tremendous amount of work being done through multiple departments, Amy, Leslie, Janet. Everyone's been working on this moving forward, and I think we're in good shape. Amy, Leslie, please correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, but I believe we're doing pretty well. If you just walk up and down Main Street and some of the side streets here, you'll see that, it's good to see that life is coming back to Nantucket. We just have to make sure we maintain vigilance.
Thank you. And that segues into the next review under approval of applications for restaurant liquor licenses and changes to premises for outdoor dining.
So before Amy launches in to her thing, I just wanted to mention, to set the stage for this a little bit. We have a kind of a, I don't know what I would call it, a sort of an executive implementation group kind of that is sort of helping give a little guidance with Amy kind of padding it up. Myself, Amy, Rachel, Leslie, and Janet. And we've been meeting once or twice a week to talk over where we are with restaurant reopenings in Phase 2 and how we're getting ready and things like that. And there is a lot more to this than people might think. So we talked over, I think, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, four things today. Amy's going to go over with you a list of establishments that are ready to have their alcoholic beverage licenses, premises, changes approved by the board. And the state now, I think as you know, has initiated, has approved legislation that allows the local licensing board, which is a select board, to approve those changes without the need for a public hearing or notice to a butters, so as to expedite the process. So Amy has a list of those, and those are coming in. I believe she's just accepting them, and we'll be putting them forward on whatever the next agenda is, if it's not tonight. Secondly, we have a preliminary review of potential street and sidewalk closures for dining with restrictions. So the alteration of premises are for those establishments who can have outdoor dining on their own property. There are establishments that do not have room on their premises to have outdoor dining on their own property because they don't have that kind of property. So our thinking is to try to locate where those places are and look at street and sidewalk closures immediately adjacent to them or as close to them as possible, with also taking into consideration what that might mean for surrounding traffic circulation, handicapped accessibility, sidewalk condition, things like that. Thirdly, we are, Amy had a very good idea to conceptually, for the board's approval, convert loading zones into curbside delivery zones once they're expired for the day. So for example, some loading zones are eight to four, and then they open up to regular parking after four. So what we are saying is turn those into the curbside delivery zones after four. No public parking there. And they would be numbered, and, you know, these are not details for us to go into tonight. We're working through them now, but Amy will take you through an overview of it. And lastly, a preliminary review of other areas for curbside pickup when loading zones are not available. So, you know, if the loading zones aren't available, there's, needs to be a place for the curbside pickup potentially. So we're going to take you through these things, and some of them are ready for your approval tonight, and some need some additional processing and review with others. Amy?
Thank you very much, Libby. As Libby mentioned, the first part of this, I think Erica has that chart and had sent to you. We just outlined every single liquor license in restaurant. We're going to start showing the screen here. And basically, as we discussed, our emergency order number 11, which follows the governor's order number 35, that helped kind of ease this process where we do not need a public hearing as we normally would. It's further being streamlined, I think, through Bill 4767 with the state right now, streamlining the ABCC approval process. So it's just allowing us to approve locally on-site, really, with the building commissioners reviewing and the health director as well to make sure those things are followed. There's also some easing of zoning laws and outdoor seating that is in this bill as well. So what I did here is kind of give you an outline of what we have right now, kind of outlining who has current outdoor space that is, they have currently licensed outdoor space. Obviously, they are ready, they're ready to go on Monday and could immediately served. Second list, we kind of highlighted who had put in an application for private space adjacent to their facility with their property owner approval. And then also, we indicated those that have applied for public space. As Libby mentioned, this is an ongoing process for those watching, and if they're not included here and sent it today, that would be why. Or they can certainly see how things go and apply for different things as we go. There's no deadline. We're kind of rolling with this. So I wanted the board to just review. Our goal was to, A, get those that were already approved out and running, and those with additional private space as much as possible up and running and get them set up. And as we've discussed with both of them, we've been kind of going, doing public kind of viewings of these and just making sure they were safe. There may be adjustments as we see as it goes. We need to make sure that they are safe, obviously, from vehicular traffic if they're in parking areas, the distancing requirements and all of those sorts of things, and health requirements. So everything highlighted on this list, as you go through, have submitted those private plans, and they're kind of up and running or approved to go or have property approval as well. So ones that aren't highlighted either have already space and have not applied or have applied for public space. So any questions, any of the board members, as far as this right here? I don't know that we need official approval. I wanted at least a review and acceptance of this as we see it thus far. So I think, you know, everyone's working hard on this, and it kind of, we also gave you some of the layouts and the link to all these applications if you wanted to take a look. People are submitting drawings, and again, they weren't required to be architects or, you know, very detailed. So they're all over the board on that as well. Any other questions on that? We can move next to another discussion we had.
I can't see everyone. Kristi?
Yeah. Go ahead, Kristi.
Couldn't find my unmuted button. Is this, I see there's a couple of applications for tents. Is that something that we're Is that something that we're easily pushing through or is that um coming just select board or is that just handled by the town?
That would be uh through the building department. Uh, as you know, uh, they put relief on the, I think, thirty day restriction on those commercial properties. So those two that I listed are the ones that I know of. Those are easy ones because they are you're talking about if it's the White Elephant or Great Harbor, they're private property should they want to erect a tent. And it would be the same process would be through the building department and the building commissioner approval um on those types of tents. So um, if we got into to spaces, public spaces and things of that sort, it might be become more of the uh street closing and and those types of issues. But those are handled through the usual process and the thirty day limit has been lifted uh for the summer.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that part?
I'm just wondering for uh the restaurants that have requested um to use public space. How are you sort of going to look at the logistics and then decide who gets public space based on if they already have existing outdoor space or how, how will you decide that?
Yeah. So that will lead us into part two of this. Um, Erica, can you put up the um outdoor dining map that we have? So in these discussions, um the first part of the discussion was to, and we're talking to downtown area here, is really identify those that have absolutely nothing, can't be open right now. And there might be one here with a gas light that has a very small space as well. Um, to start there, who has nothing, you know, that they can expand too easily. So as you see on the left here, the little cocktail glasses in different colors, it kind of highlights where each of these are. So um, really looking at, you know, backyard barbecue proprietors, Lemon Press, The Beat, uh P P X and Nautilus, Rosen Crown um and Gaslight. Uh, where they're both all located towards an area where we can find maybe some space that we can do this. So that's where this started. Again, we can certainly uh expand as we, as we go. Um, as I've highlighted and read some of the areas that we consider um easier to close, whether it be five to ten at night, if it's, you know, a twenty-four seven situation this summer, uh, the board will have those options, I think, to review. Um, if we look at, obviously, the easiest possibly would be Cambridge Street here in front of Nautilus. Uh, it would take care of Nautilus, The Beat and P P X, three locations that have no outdoor space whatsoever. Um, it wouldn't really block off any access to things. There are other ways to kind of make that loop. So and it is paved. Um, that's another consideration, ADA compliance, obviously. So cobblestone areas are difficult. Um, there certainly could be ways to do it, but we tried to identify those areas. Um, if we look up s- across the street, uh, another side of Cambridge there where we usually close on Saturdays for the market, which we will be doing again this year. Um, that's a paved area adjacent to Gaslight that could provide some options there. Um, North Union being cobblestone. So again, we're gonna confer with um our local folks here on ADA compliance to see what would, it would take to do that. Um, thirdly, up on the other side of Dreamland here, this red line up here, um, is a consideration for Rosen Crown. Um, I think, actually, Erica, can you flip to um in front of the Rosen Crown? So I think it's a fourth one. So in some of these situations, if you see here and if we're looking at different locations on the street, um, you have to have some sort of uh passageway for folks to walk by in the sidewalk unless you're closing the whole sidewalk, which is difficult with other businesses affected. So it's looking at, as we've seen in other places, having some sort of seating or having high tops here where these red dots are between the trees that allows people to to pass by and then barriers. We would have to take out some parking spots and things of that. So looking at those areas that we can do that um is something that I think we should consider. Uh, at least for, you, you know, the evening times or different times that they can use that. And then again, additionally, that space next to the Dreamland, uh, that part of the street could be a possible place to close down again. Allowing for, that's a Nautilus and then um, yeah, keep it on the, yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Um, right there, thank you. Um, as well, um, Rosen Crown, they can come out the back and go down and and serve in that area too as well because the concern is where Rosen Crown is in places like that is a very tough corner. If you watch a truck come around it, things like that are difficult. So uh, again, I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but these are what we're looking at and looking to bring to you um shortly for uh a vote on as well. So those are the easy parts there that we think that can happen and that would take care of most of those without space. Again, we have proprietors up forward on India Street that has gotten space next door at Robertson. And then across the street on a little, that little park area that is owned by a private owner that we can possibly consider as well. So it's taking ideas like that to help those spaces. And then Lemon Press on Main Street that has absolutely no outdoor space is putting together a plan that would go out into a parking space. And so we would have to consider if that is something to work as well. So most of these folks have submitted different plans and things for us to consider. It's what we identified as some of the easier spots to close. Again, South Water being the truck route is difficult uh and Broad Street, Main Street and that for any sort of long closures. Um, any questions on what we've proposed thus far?
Um, when do you think we might need to have a meeting for the things that we have to vote on?
Um, and I don't know if Libby wants to to confirm that. We discussed it and um the couple of things that we have to really confirm are gonna be some liability insurance requirements for the town, um, some more ADA considerations and a few other items too. So I think we discussed early next week. Libby, did you wanna?
I don't know. Did we come up with a specific date? I think all of those things need to get pinned down. And um, to the extent that we can hurry them along as best we can, we, we would, we'd do that. But the, hey, the earliest possible time would probably be Monday.
I mean, I was, I was thinking that um if we're doing an executive session on Monday, maybe we could do this as an open session portion of the same meeting. Um, Jason, are you ready?
Yeah, I just wondered is, are, are we far enough along for us to make a motion that we approve it in um and then have a stipulation that has to be approved with ADA, this, this, and this? Or do we still want to come on, coming back to us with everything, just to streamline it?
Um, uh, m- m- maybe, maybe conceptually, and then we could, we could come back to you with some of the policy things like, as, as Amy mentioned, just for example, Cambridge Street. Is that gonna be a twenty-four seven closure? Is that gonna be five to ten or some other time? Um, or, or are we just thinking we're gonna shut that street off all summer? Um, there, there are going to be some traffic circulation impacts on if, you know, depending on what we do and where we do it. And we hope those will be at least mitigated or offset a bit by the valet, which will be available this summer. And hopefully, you know, people will feel safe enough to take the shuttle and figure out other ways to get downtown. There, there may be other ways. And um, but, but say, for example, that Nautilus is ready to go and they really, they want to open Monday to set up. I don't know if that's true. I'm making this up. But if they want to open Monday to set up, maybe you could authorize us to pending the resolution of these necessary items that will have to be in place before they open. We, we say, okay, you can open on Monday from X time to X time. But the details have to be, I don't know, I'm sort of talking aloud, thinking aloud here. The details have to be worked out because we are gonna need signage and some public outreach about street closures and when they're closed and that kind of thing. But I, I don't know. I guess if you guys like the conceptual part about this, we'll just move ahead with working with the establishments to 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 figure it out and see what their needs are for that timeframe.
Um, Kristy, then Matt.
Yeah, I would be in favor of approving this conceptually. I know that restaurants have been closed for the last ninety days and I, I know that waiting another week sounds like it's not that far away, but it really is to these restaurants. I think anything that we can do to kind of help this process. I, I also know Amy and staff has, have been working around the clock on this, so to delay it anymore seems um uh, not needed. Um, the other thing that I just didn't see on the map was, are we considering any curbside pickup designated spots or zones? Um, if you could touch on that a little bit.
Yes, thank you. Um, I think uh we mentioned earlier about uh the first thing we thought we can do is convert loading zone areas uh and working on signage for that to uh pick up zones once they're done. I think some are done at two, some are done at noon, some are done at four. So I've been cataloging that too as well, so that they can be numbered and located. So someone can call Sam and loading zone seven and they can be delivered their food or they can run and pick it up. So it'd be a quick turnaround. And we can certainly, uh, as Libby had mentioned, identify some other spots. Um, certainly during the day uh that can be designated in that such as well, or add a couple additional fifteen minute spots to allow for folks to uh do that quick turnaround. So that is a plan and that's what we're mapping out right now and how we would do signage and things of that sort uh to identify that. Yes.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, my comments, I, I agree with Kristy. We need to move this quicker for the ones that we can do it for. Uh, I think that the uh, I, however we set aside the spots sort of in parking spaces should be run by historic commission or HTC advisory. Make sure it's all consistent and it all looks good. Uh, a lot of the pictures we had in our packet were pretty bad, but I think it'd be pretty easy to do something that looked proper. You know, with, with barrels or something else, so it's all consistent. Uh, and I was gonna ask about to go. You answer most of it except what'll be enforcement of those? If people are parking in the to-go spots and and restaurants are really counting on it, we have to make sure that that's sorted. Uh, and was there any discussion or consideration of a more extensive street opening, sort of all of federal, the two side streets? And if there was, why was that rejected or is that to be considered later? Because there's a couple of people who don't have a lot of outside seating compared to their restaurants that, you know, that I think would look at this and you know, sort of have, I wonder.
Um, I, I'll comment and then if Libby, if you have anything uh else to add, but I, it was nothing was rejected. Um, I think we discussed two um different ways to do a special event type of closures like we've done before of Maine and other areas, but it would certainly have to be done um on whether it's once a week or at different times because obviously it is much more difficult. It probably would need public safety and things of that sort, but it wasn't, wasn't rejected. Um, we're just looking at, you know, the immediate needs and what we can do on a more permanent basis or on a more regular basis for those folks. Um, but no, I don't think uh anything of that sort was rejected. Uh, just probably more limited.
I think that one of our concepts was that, I think, I think we heard from some restaurants that at street closures, depending, depending on where they are, more widespread might actually hurt them. And they would rather not have a like a, a full scale kind of a closure, like shut down federal, shut down South Water or whatever. And so our, our priority was to locate the establishments that don't have any capacity for outdoor at all and focus on them. And then if there were others that want to expand their areas more, we would certainly hear from them and and discuss it and bring it back to the board if need be. Um, Leslie, did you want to add anything to that? Because we did, we did definitely talk about this.
You know, we talked it, or talked about it quite a bit during our, you know, work group sessions and you know, I think it was really important for us to see what the restaurants were looking for instead of us trying to come up with ideas of what we thought they might want. And I think we received um many lesser requests than I was expecting for us to receive. Um, but we do have quite a bit using sidewalks and other things that need, you know, some more evaluation for traffic impacts and pedestrian impacts and that sort of thing. So I think on Monday, we'll be in a really good position to come up with some firm recommendations to provide to you.
And um I'll just a- add on to that too, and folks watching, uh, we didn't cover all the, you know, different sidewalks and areas that people had asked. Um, I was just showing on the Rose, um, Rosen Crown, excuse me, how that would set up would be there's other little pockets down near backyard barbecue across the street on that sidewalk in different areas uh that we were considering. And Matt, obviously, to your point uh that those photos I showed was what Boston just released today on outdoor seating. And it just gives an example of high traffic areas and low traffic areas, the type of um barriers and stuff like that. It was just a good kind of idea of weight and height and things of that sort. So that came out uh this week. So that was just a little helpful kind of hint as to what that looks like um in that sense as well. So uh there, if we do kind of do these first and then expand out a little, there are others included. So I don't want people to think we, we are including them if they didn't see it in this initial map.
Kristi?
I think Amy might have just answered my question. Um, but this initial list that we're seeing is um people who have liquor licenses. Is that correct?
Correct. Um, for the most part, um, you know, looking down near the steamship there and those areas, most are takeout as well. Obviously, on the corner, they have uh seating uh outdoors as well. If there were additional in that area, um, there's uh Black Eyed Susans, um, which only is a small, very small table in the back too as well. So um, we would look to try to kind of assist them too as well. But with the um public spaces on alcohol service, it requires a lot more insurance liability and other things as well and actual official approval. Um, so that's the more difficult task as well. But again, I reach out, any, anyone with wanting to do that should reach out um to us as well to consider.
So not, not to put on Jason, but if he wanted outdoor patio space, that would still go through you, just not just left board.
That, that's, you know, his private space there in that driveway. Um, so yeah, you know, that would be, you know, for his consideration. It wouldn't require extra license. It's just if people start pushing out to sidewalks and things of sort is to check in and any sort of blocking of sidewalks, we want to try to watch out for.
And last question, um, with retail, I know that you've been meeting with retail. Are they able to put in any request for have merchandise out on the streets?
I don't know if I can answer that uh quick. I don't know, Libby, if you wanted to address that.
I think certainly they, they can a- absolutely ask and we definitely can take a look at it. If the board doesn't mind having, you know, racks and things outside, um, we would not want sidewalks to be blocked. We would want pedestrian access to be clear. But if the board's okay with having, you know, stuff on sidewalks, it's gonna look a little bizarre like, which is fine for, for this summer, maybe. Um, it's, it's um unusual because normally we have a bylaw prohibiting those things, but we have talked about l- suspending it or relaxing it for the summer. But I think, I think we would just want to know and we'd want to prevent things like, you know, certain products being um, uh, how can I put this? Um, it, uh, put on people. Yeah, and so no, I don't think we want that kind of thing, but the display of actual merchandise from tables or racks or something like that, again, as long as it's not blocking the sidewalk. I think, I think definitely if people want to do that, we would, we'd want to hear from them.
Kristi?
If, if it makes you feel better, the governor's phase two orders does not allow for samples, so no perfume or lotions can be applied to anybody.
I did see that. I'm very fortunate. Um, have you guys talked about as we move into like the next phase, when they start to allow indoor seating? How will this evolve? Like, sort of, as you, as you give this, these extra provisions, at what point do you kind of pull out of them? I mean, with all of the social distancing that will be required for indoor, they're still gonna need some, some help to have more seating outdoors? So is this something we envision this all, this will go into place and stay for the duration of this season?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Um, the, I know that and, and Leslie can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, you know, obviously, we expect, we're supposed to hear this week, apparently, some uh updates as to how that's gonna work from the state side of it. They said step two and phase two. Um, so we expect when indoor seating starts, it will be at probably twenty-five percent occupancy. And from my understanding, Leslie, is how this is written, is if they are adding additional capacity outside that that might subtract somewhat from inside full occupancy. Is that correct as far as that? And then building commissioner will determine what that is?
That's correct. So the total number of seats can exceed what they would otherwise be allowed on the premises through their building permit or a special permit that's been issued. Um, I think, at least with what we're seeing so far, with the reduced occupancy that's being anticipated, um, combined with the extra separation that's required outside, uh, most of these restaurants will probably still be, you know, well under their capacity, even if they keep all of the outdoor seats for the entire season. And I believe the Board of Health order, which I don't have in front of me right now, expires at the beginning of November. So um, that's the sort of timeframe that we're talking about.
And I, I wanted to um add on to this, and a lot of restaurants have asked me this because there are rumor mills out there um as far as the state and uh they have another bill that's going before the Senate, I believe, today, four seven six seven. that is proposed to allow restaurants to include cocktails to go with takeout food. That would have to be approved by them, signed by the governor and sent by the ABCC. But they're saying that they would approve that right now until February twenty twenty-one. So that obviously says to me that the state is looking to still allow takeout and delivery of alcohol with food deliveries through the winter. This looks like, and it may possibly extend till November thirtieth, some of these outdoor seating plans. So there's gonna be further bills coming down that will amend some of these things. But for those listening, not until it comes down from the ABCC is it actually official. So we'll, we'll tell them when that is.
Have, have any of the restaurants asked for extended hours? Like, are they, are they wanting to do more seating, like five to eleven or something?
No, there hasn't been a request on that. And that's something I actually started thinking about today, watching what Boston was doing as far as limiting different things. But most things are allowing for what your current license allows for. There was, obviously, in the beginning, we had said there was gonna be a ten PM limit. That was just something in a draft, so we didn't really ever take that up. But there hasn't been any discussion about that. Our understanding was that they were allowed to continue at whatever limits their license currently had on them.
Okay. Are there any other questions on that? Did we want to make a motion about the, the concept then to be firmed up, hopefully on Monday? With more details? Jason? Is that why you're raising your hand, or you had another question?
I was gonna do both. I was gonna say, is there anything that we need to know about Mid Island? Any street closings or anything interesting outside of individual?
Well, and I don't know. I know there's a couple of things in process, but I guess it's in this chart anyway. There wasn't anything on street closures, and I don't know that it would be necessary. Most places would have additional space. Island Kitchen has submitted, obviously, different things in that area for opening our market, extension of those premises as well. We're working with the Chicken Box to add a food trailer and some outdoor seating to assist with them, because otherwise, if it's a straight-up just alcohol service, that's the other thing, the state seems to have pushed bars to phase four without much fanfare. But, so that would assist them as well in that area. So Sea Grill moving out into the parking lot area there, too. A Kitty's adding some additional space. So I think all of those have those additional space. There were no direct requests for any street closures in Mid Island, and I don't yet see a reason for it. But again, this is a rolling thing. If things come up, and, and we'll adjust as we need to.
Have we thought about overflow parking options? If those businesses go into their parking lots, are we?
Yeah, there, there are a couple of different options, I know. One in particular that was working out today, Millie's, obviously, going into their parking area. They have, are working on securing additional space as well. Obviously, we know there's a lot of parking issues. So looking at it case by case where it needs to be. But again, we haven't, they're gonna wait, too, a lot of them, and see just how many people are here and coming out. So that's still an unknown. But the areas where we have had problems, even on a good day, they're working to secure what that will look like. And in those cases, too, with parking lots, and Millie's is a good example of having a full-time attendant who is there monitoring the traffic and directing those folks and making sure the traffic flow continues and does not disrupt the neighborhood and is safe. So in those cases, we've asked for that, and they have complied. So that, that helps in that area as well.
Matt?
I've, I've spoken to a number of the restaurants. One of the comments I make to them is they have to solve, help solve that issue that you bring up, Dawn, with their employees. If, you know, a lot of these places, the employees are parking along the street. They're parking in the, you know, in different town areas. And, and so they have to be more vigilant within, and they've all agreed. But they have to be more vigilant with their employees. And, you know, lease out space somewhere else for the employees to park, find an empty lot, you know, a half mile away and have the kids walk. Whatever it is has to be worked out, because otherwise, otherwise we'll be back here dealing with a lot of complaints. And so I think, you know, I've said that consistently to everyone I've spoken to, and most of them know the importance.
So do you guys want a motion from us on the, the concepts that were laid out so far?
I think that might be helpful.
Does somebody?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, all those in favor by roll call vote in the order at which I see you. Rita Higgins?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Matt Phoebe?
Aye.
Kristy Ferentzela?
Aye.
Okay, and if we have this ready by Monday, can we add it to the executive session that we were scheduling? I guess we would do this first in open session. Does that make sense, Libby?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Economic Recovery Task Force? Oh, sorry, Christine, then Matt, I don't know who had their hand up for.
Do we have to make a motion for the liquor expansion? No?
No, I don't believe so. And I don't know if, Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was acceptance of it, and there's still some more clarification coming down. So I think that was enough for now.
Okay. Matt?
And just a reminder, we really should be thinking about the curbside and how, you know, as we go forward, that will be, I think, the next challenge, is how do we make sure that spaces that are necessary for that turnover quickly enough?
Economic Recovery Task Force, who's?
So that basically, I think, I think we basically just covered that.
Yeah, I was.
That's what we've really been focusing on. Unless there's any questions about other economic recovery issues, I think that, again, has been our main focus. Okay.
Is there anything that anybody wanted to raise, or on that? Okay. Yaya? Sorry, I think Jason?
Okay, yeah, I just, I just wanna, should we schedule a meeting in another week or two? I know, Janet, we, we talked about meeting again once some, certain things got rolling. Does anybody, Amy? Janet, Leslie, do you think it would be helpful for everybody to meet again, two weeks, three weeks?
I, you know, I, I think we've talked about this, too, as well as getting feedback. You know, obviously, a lot of those folks helped give us, you know, direction and things of that sort. It's always good to check in and, you know, it's good to see kind of how things are going and things of that sort. It's never a bad thing, I don't think, you know, so, yeah.
Do you mean that Economic Recovery Task Force that had a couple of meetings and came up with these recommendations that we're now implementing? To reconvene that group, Jason?
You're muted.
Discussed that a little bit with Julia Novak, that maybe we would want to do that once things were rolling. I just wanted to go out there and see if it made sense to get feedback from the restaurants after they've been implementing this, whatever it is, in maybe a week or two.
I, you know, I always think it's always good to communicate and to find out what else, what other things have popped up that we might have missed, because it's not coming in through our regular channels. Certainly, communication strategies or whatever other policy issues we want to be thinking about. Not a bad idea.
And not just, sorry, not just restaurants, retail, transportation, you know, the boats might, you know, truck drivers might note, see something that we don't, we don't notice. I don't want to leave it just restaurants.
I, I agree that we would convene that whole Recovery Task Force, which is about thirty people, and find out, and talk with Julia about how to organize that meeting and find out what else we need to be responding to.
Sounds good. Okay, and we, I don't, I didn't see any public comments during this. We'll move on to the next section of our agenda. This is for public comments, for items that are otherwise not on our agenda for discussion. There's just been, there's been some questions about public comment. And generally, public comment is something where anyone can come and speak and bring an item to the board's attention. And generally, the board takes in public comment and we, and will discuss later whether it's something that should become an agenda item to, to answer the question or address the issue or get more information on. So with that, are there any public comments this evening? So far, I don't see any, but obviously, it's open. Jason?
Can we wait a second just to see? Because it takes a little bit for people to figure out how to raise their hand, or?
I'll, sorry, I'll go back to it if anybody raises their hand.
And can I ask for maybe in two weeks to, to, for our Recovery Task Force? Maybe in two or three weeks to put that somewhere on, on, just so we have a date? That's, that's for Janet. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I don't believe that there's any new business to add. Approval of treasury warrants?
So moved.
All in favor by roll call, Rita Higgins?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Matt Phoebe?
Aye.
Kristy Ferentzela?
Aye.
Dawn, there's one. I just saw Evie O'Connor has her hand up. I would love to have Evie come on and make a comment. Evie, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead. I like your cute dog.
Oh, thank you. I had a question, because I emailed my public comment in. Is that a separate situation?
You emailed your public comment to who?
That was the instructions I got when I registered for this meeting, but it said to email the public comment to publiccomment@nantucket-ma.gov.
Sorry, Dawn, we have an account for this, but it just came in at five forty-seven, so.
I was just, I didn't know, I was confused. I'll just repeat it here.
Okay, that's fine.
So my question is about the March eleventh, twenty twenty Select Board Meeting. And I'm wondering what you, as a board, are doing, or if this has already been done behind the scenes to repair the harm and disrespect and would appear to me to be silencing of Rosemarie in the, in that public comment forum. And as a community member, I'm concerned about an alarm by the message that was sent to the black community on Nantucket when the comfort of the white board members seemed to be prioritized over the safety and protection of a black family asking for help. So as far as I know, this hasn't been named or acknowledged publicly by the board, and I'm wanting to, to follow up on that and see if there's any advocacy or action being taken around that.
And this is generally public comment, but, but I do want to just respond. I have reached out to Rosemarie to talk directly. We had actually, after that meeting, had coffee set up, and then COVID happened. And I, I haven't heard back from her yet about when we can talk. I, I am open to, and I've already discussed whether we could get an update in regard to the police investigation that we could certainly have at a public meeting. But I want to ask her if that's what she, she would like. So that's what I've been doing, and I think some other board members have been having discussions as well. And Rita, go ahead. Rita, you're muted. You're, I'm mute.
How's that? Okay. One of the things that has bothered me about what happened at the March eleventh meeting in retrospect was that I, I think there was such a focus for me on what we're supposed to be doing. And so already, this public comment is going beyond that. To date, public comment has been one of the most awkward, for the past three years, one of the most awkward parts of a meeting, because I believe legally, we're not supposed to respond, because it's not on the agenda as per open meeting law. People bring things to our attention. Some of them are, you know, ranging from, you know, someone isn't taking down their signs on posts about yard sales to, you know, my child was hit by a car, and I don't feel that I was giving appropriate response. But they're supposed to be put on agenda so that we can have proper public discussion as per open meeting law. But one of the things that has really bothered me is that, you know, I think that the board has, people are concerned that the board was apathetic or dismissive and were intentionally trying to silence Rosemarie. And I know for myself, it was almost the opposite. It was sort of, all of the emotions were so high. And I know that this board is a very caring board, but I didn't know what to do or what to say to make it better. And I also knew that we're not supposed to be responding. And, you know, that's, I think, going forward, the shoulds around laws and legislation are probably going to change. And that was a moment where, you know, I think we, we just, we really failed to do the right thing. And I think that this board, I, I really believe this board is going to make changes addressing that. But I, I've just been really upset that it came across as being dismissive. I think it's far from that. But I think going forward, we will have to find better ways to express to people during public comment that we do care. And I know that Dawn and I spoke immediately after the meeting and talked about steps that we could take on the town, for the town, to address the issue that Rosemarie brought up. And unfortunately, the following week is really when we went to Zoom meetings and COVID. And I think that these discussions need to be as much as possible in, not on Zoom. They need to be in person in the, you know, with people there to discuss. But we may not have that luxury, because I don't know when we'll be off Zoom. I think we were hoping we would get there sooner, but we may not. So I guess that's all for now. And I think, you know, we did put this on the agenda for later today as a broader discussion about what will come next. I, I apologize to Rosemarie for anything that came across as not being compassionate or concerned or horrified about what she had to deal with with her son.
I would very well said Rita, and I would think all of us agree with that statement. Jason, were you?
Yeah, I was gonna address this in our agenda item at the end. Would you let me speak now? I can.
If you feel that you want to speak, speak now, I would say, go ahead. But, but so everyone watching knows that we do have an agenda item to talk about racial equity at the end of this and sort of about how we can get the correct, you know, gather the right information to help the community.
Yeah, I'll just touch on it for a second, and then I'll, I'll get to more detail at the end. I think one of the issues for me personally is by not knowing what to say and hesitating, whether it was during that meeting or the next week after, because I didn't know what to say and I didn't want to say the wrong thing, that fear and that discomfort stopped me from, from reaching out to her, to you, Rosemarie. And, and I'm sorry for that. And what I was trying to avoid by not saying the wrong thing ended up making it worse by not saying anything. And that, that is a, that is a problem for a lot of us, and it's, it's a problem for me. And by not reaching out, I did not listen. And that's one of the things that we, that we need to do, is to reach out and to listen to the stories of, of people of color in our community. And I want to say I'm sorry that I did not do that. Now, I'll speak more about that, that later. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for your comments, Evie. I don't see any other hands raised. We have pending contracts?
I would move to three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Rita Higgins?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Matt Phoebe?
Aye.
Kristy Ferentzela?
Aye.
Von Holgate, aye. As I said, we've covered Town Manager's Report in our COVID update. That's been the most consuming thing for town government these days.
Sure.
Yes.
Just wanted, something came in that I wanted to just mention, if I can find it again here, from NCTV. More, it was just a little bit more about graduation.
Okay.
This Saturday at noon, the senior showcase will be aired on NCTV. See photos of the, see photos the graduates picked to commemorate their time in high school and hear interviews with them and their families about how they're processing graduation and what favorite memories they will carry with them. And then at one PM, the graduation. the graduates will walk across the stage to receive their diplomas and hear all the graduation speeches from school leaders and surprise guests. So that's just a little bit more detail about that. And I, I know there's not a Town Manager Report, but I meant to mention under the Public Information and Town Services Update, just two quick things. There's Greg sent me the PIO information. There's still just a lot of traffic on the town website. Things way, way up over last year and lots of hits on things like our Summer 2020 page. And we are working on getting our beach management plan online as soon as possible. It, it's changing because some of the state guidance has changed a little bit, but we're going to be needing to get signage up about carrying capacity on beaches with over sand vehicles, things like that. And lots of action is occurring on that, a lot of activity. And with respect to when town offices might be opened up, we're trying to keep an eye on what other towns are doing and what the governor is saying. There are a few towns throughout the state that are, that have town halls and public offices that are open, but more don't. And a lot of them do not even have a date yet as to when they will open. We don't have a date yet as to when we will open back up to the public. However, we are available for the pub, to serve the public via other means. Email, phone calls, video conferencing, drop boxes, regular mail, things like that. And a lot of other towns are doing the same. So I just wanted to mention those things.
Thank you. So we do have a public hearing to consider an HDC appeal tonight. This is the first one of these that we're going to try and do on, on this. And you all might have to help me walk, walk me through the process exactly of who we hear from first because I.
So it's in your packet?
I know. I just can't get to it.
Okay.
But, or, let me just get started and I will get to the part where, where that is.
So call the public, public hearing to order.
Yes. So I'm opening the public hearing and.
Outline the procedure. Here, I'm going to share my screen real quick.
Sorry, I'm trying to get to it.
There you go. Do you see it?
Yep. Thank you. The appeal to the Select for Concerns to HDC Decision and is not a new hearing of the matter already heard by the HDC. No new information may be brought forth during the appeal process before the Select Board. Any information not previously submitted to the HDC will not be allowed. I'm opening the public hearing, outline the procedure. You know, we'll try and keep the statements, you know, within a reasonable time, time. Now, and then we will move to the appellant to state his or her case and the reason for the appeal.
And the appellant tonight is being represented by Nicholas Brown.
Nicholas?
My offense? Good evening. My name is Nicholas Brown. I represent the appellant, Lydia Denny Palmer LLC. I'll refer to the appellant as LDC during my presentation. LDC is the owner of 110 Wawinnett Road, which directly abuts 112 Wawinnett Road, the property subject to this appeal. 112 Wawinnett is owned by John and Kerry Walker. This appeal concerns the approval of a so-called addition to the existing small cottage at 112 Wawinnett Road. 112 Wawinnett is located in the village of Wawinnett, just three parcels over from the Wawinnett Hotel. Properties in the center of Wawinnett Village tend to be long and narrow with much of the land unbuildable because of the proximity to Nantucket Harbor. 112 Wawinnett is approximately 0.8 acres in size or 36,000 square feet. But again, only about half the property is buildable. The original cottage is just 832 square feet in size and is a single story. The cottage is so close to the water that it couldn't be built in the same location today. It'd have to be moved back. To preserve the proximity of the existing cottage to the water, the walkers proposed to build an addition that completely consumes the original structure. The addition triples the ground cover of the original cottage, doubles its height and completely fills the narrow property from north to south. The large scale of the proposed addition, which is really a tear down and a rebuild in our view, does not fit the historic character of Wawinnett Village, which is historically made up of small summer cottages like that to be replaced by the walkers. When the walkers first presented their plans to the HDC in May of last year, Chairman Pol recognised as much, noting that, quote, "The whole notion of saving the existing house and considering this as an addition is disingenuous," close quote. He further stated that the applicant should consider giving up and moving the proposed addition out of the 50-foot buffer from the coastal bank and keeping the existing structure as a guesthouse or garage. Despite Chairman Pol's legitimate concerns, the HDC required only minor modifications to the proposed construction plans. The height of a few gables were reduced, as was the number of windows, but the general design, location, scale and massing of the house are unchanged. By approving the construction plans at 112 Wawinnett Road, the HDC ignored both the special legislation that created the HDC as well as the development guidelines that inform its review process. The HDC was created for the specific purpose of preserving and protecting historic buildings, places and districts on Nantucket. Wawinnett is specifically identified in building with Nantucket in mind as one of the existing small settlements that should be accorded special consideration by the HDC. In these special areas of Nantucket, the primary goal for new construction is to harmonize with the existing building pattern and character of the area. There's supposed to be a sense of relatedness to the surrounding buildings. The most important criteria are the scale and massing of the proposed structure. In this case, the HDC approved a large addition to a small cottage that does not harmonize with the historic village character of Wawinnett. LDC's complaints about the size, scale and massing of the proposed addition were rejected repeatedly by the HDC as untrue. In the view of the HDC, at least when considering this project, the village of Wawinnett has no unifying architectural theme, nor are there any meaningful limitations on the size of what can be built on Wawinnett's small, compact lots. The HDC failed to recognize or appreciate that 112 Wawinnett sits at the threshold of where Wawinnett transitions from larger out-of-town lots of an acre or more to smaller in-town lots that are less than one acre. Despite this transition in lot size, the HDC concluded that a large home, like those on a larger out-of-town lots, was also appropriate for a much smaller lot like 112 Wawinnett Road. In reaching this conclusion and approving the house at 112 Wawinnett, the HDC ignored its obligation to preserve one of, to preserve one of Nantucket's historic places. Instead, the HDC's approval represents another decisive step toward the homogenization of Nantucket and the elimination of Wawinnett's unique village atmosphere. For these reasons, the HDC's approval should be overturned as arbitrary and capricious. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like next we have the, we would hear from the Historic District Commission. I see that Ray Pol is on now. Ray, are you planning to present? Or George? Or Kathy? Ray? I can't hear you. Ray? You're, I, we can't hear you. I see your lips moving, but we can't hear you. And you're not, you're not showing muted, so I'm not sure what's going on. Ray, unmute now. I see you're connected. Ray, turn off your mute. Ray?
Yeah.
There you are. Okay.
Am I up already?
All right, we are live on YouTube right now.
All right, everybody's still on a little bit of a break, so we'll need a minute for everybody to come back.
That's fine. I'm gonna work on getting a message up on the channel, but I don't know how long that will take me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it appears that we are back on. Hi. Shall we continue? Nicholas, I think you were speaking? Or are you done?
I was thinking I'm all done.
But I'm not sure if we actually captured what you said for the public. Could you do a redo?
I can do a review or something close to it. I'm saying that LDC doesn't think the, or the HTC didn't properly consider this project. The, yes, they held several meetings, possibly more than they normally would, and they may have reviewed the surrounding houses to identify some unifying architectural theme. But they treated the review of the surrounding houses as an architectural buffet. And if a particular feature existed on one house, that was sufficient grounds to include it on the Walker's proposed house. And that's not an appropriate basis for reviewing a house and approving a house. Well, when it is accorded special consideration by the HTC's guidelines, and this buffet approach is improper. And LDC argues and believes that it's arbitrary and capricious, and for that reason, this approval should be overturned.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the HTC before I go to public comment? Right? Right?
Yep. Unmuting. Just a quick response. We never regarded this house as an architectural buffet. It's got a consistent style, and it's perfectly in keeping with the HTC's guidelines. The other thing that I'd like to say is Mr. Brown sort of indicated that the changes were relatively minor. Well, the reason that they were relatively minor was because the initial concept that came in was not that off. So if it were a gigantic house with, you know, formal elements on it, I think we would have had a different approach. But, you know, from our perspective, this was, you know, most of the way there, and we just needed some tweaks. And it took us five hearings to get there, and we did, and we approved it that way. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to public comment. I know that John had asked to make a public comment, so I'll let you go first.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. My name is John Walker. My address is 112 Wall 1th Road. I'm the owner of the property that is the subject of this appeal. My family and I have owned property on Nantucket for over 30 years. This is my first time before you, and I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. And as I mentioned before the call started, you know, the board has done just a phenomenal job. I've watched every select meeting, and hats off to all of you for the job you've done over the last three months. But let me start where I would like to end, the swift denial of this appeal, so we can go on with our lives and enjoy and resume the enjoyment of our home. Following a full and robust hearing before the HTC, where our challenging neighbor was represented by a team of lawyers, the HTC did precisely what it is charged to do. It carefully reviewed the plans in great detail. It considered input from a wide range of sources, including my objecting neighbor and her team of lawyers. It weighed the facts, and it reached a principled decision. And it reached that decision through the logical application of its controlling standards with the evidence before it. So here we are on appeal, and I would like to emphasize, this is an appeal. This is not a mulligan. It's not a do-over. My neighbor had her day, and she lost. It is now on the burden, it is now her burden to prove the HTC's decision was arbitrary and capricious. On this record, she did not and cannot carry that burden for the reasons so elegantly stated in Kathy Flynn's letter dated January 27, 2020, which I adopt as my own and need not repeat. I'd also like to just mention the comments of Mr. Brown's assertion about the size of the homes in the village. LDC, as we're referencing, or Dale Arna's home, which is my direct abutter, my direct neighbor. Her home is over 5,000 square feet. She has five buildings on the property, of which her greenhouse is larger than my home. So I think it is a misrepresentation of the architecture, and as Kathy also eloquently pointed out, if you walk the beach, you're going to see the size of the homes, and you can barely see our home from either vantage point. So again, I think it's a misrepresentation about the size of the homes in the village, especially with my direct neighbor, and then two houses down, which is adjacent to the wall, went in, they're over 3,000 square feet with a guest house that's larger than my home as well. So I would like to add in closing that my wife and I have tried our level best to listen and cooperate with our neighbor to address her concerns. It's come at a substantial cost and expense, but we finally received approval. We have the full support of all of our other neighbors with no objections. I'm not aware of anyone else that has objected to this. And we love our home. We love this home. We're keeping the inside of it as is, and we're just trying to build, you know, with the great plans that Matt did and the HTC approved. We've got four children and 852 square feet. Worked great for 10 years, but it doesn't work anymore with teenagers. So, but again, I'd like to close with saying that we tried, we honestly tried to accommodate our neighbor, but it was never good enough. In sum, we most respectfully request that you deny the appeal. The HD's decision was neither arbitrary nor capricious, and it should be affirmed in all respects. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have Rick Atherton has his hand raised, so I'll go to Rick. I can hear you, Rick. Go ahead.
Just a couple of observations, if I may. For the record, the Athertons live about halfway between Walwinn and Quinnet. And just by way of a little sort of story and history for you, and Dawn has a Quinnet family history here. Maybe 15 years ago, a property in Quinnet was purchased, and a new design was presented, and the neighbors all felt it was totally inappropriate to the character. And as things worked out, that existing building was declared historic, and the new design was never constructed, and the village benefited from that effort. That's a little different from this consideration, but I do know the village of Walwinn and the village of Quinnet. And my initial concern with this application is a couple folds. Number one, I understand the select board has a very difficult, high standard to overcome to rule in favor of an appeal. However, I think the time spent on any application and the fullness of the minutes are not the only way to decide that there has been due process, and it's not capricious. My concern with this application is it goes from sideline to sideline. And if we accept that as the new Walwinn standard, I guess we can assume the HTC will be happy to approve applications for reconstruction or new construction in lots in Walwinn that go from sideline to sideline. And eventually, that will lead to nothing but a full panoply of structures from the beach. I think this project could well be turned a little bit on its side, and ground cover going from east to west as opposed to north to south, if I have my directions correctly. And I think that in and of itself constitute a arbitrary and capricious decision, and not in keeping with at least my understanding of the intent of the Walwinn's character. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Are there any? I haven't seen anyone else raise their hand. Are there any other public comments? Are there any? I will move to board questions before I completely close the public hearing. Anyone? No? Okay. Any more public comments? No? Matt?
Yeah, I have, I guess, maybe a John Georgia. I was a little troubled with a comment earlier that square footage and size of a building is not in the purview of the HTC. My understanding from earlier appeals, earlier HTC appeals, was that that's about one of the only things that really is right now. That, you know, that they could say no because it doesn't fit in the streetscape. It doesn't fit in the neighborhood. That size is absolutely in the purview of the HTC. So that's a question for John. Is size in the purview of the HTC?
So Matt, I'm gonna defer to George Pucci, who's on the call. George?
Thanks. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. George Pucci from Town Council's office. Did I unmute myself? Yes, good. Yeah, in response to Matt's question, thighs in relation to its surroundings, it's definitely a relevant consideration for the board. And so the language that I would refer the board to is Section 9B of the Historic District Commission Act. And that provides, in case of new construction or additions, which this is an addition, the HTC shall consider the appropriateness of the size and shape of the building or structures, both in relation to the land area upon which the building or structure is situated, and buildings and structures in the vicinity. And the commission may, in appropriate cases, impose dimensional and setback requirements in addition to those required by applicable bylaw. So that's where the language comes from, that size is definitely relevant, the size of the structure, but it's only relevant in the context that that lot is located in. In other words, if it's out of keeping with its surroundings, that would be a relevant consideration for the HTC to consider in either approving a project or conditioning it and further reducing the size of the building. And having said that, if the commission in the alternative finds that the size of the building, the size of the expansion or the proposed addition is in keeping with its surroundings, with the surrounding neighborhood, that would be grounds to find that the commission, in fact, that would be grounds to find that the commission, in fact, you know, properly considered factors within its jurisdiction. In other words, even if you have a large structure, if it's in the context of something that makes that large structure appropriate or an expanded structure appropriate when viewing it in connection with its surroundings, that would that would be a proper exercise of the commission's jurisdiction.
Yeah, no, yeah, thank you, George. That was my point is you know, we've had this discussion, this building, this whole application reminds me of one we dealt with in Matikit, which was very similar. One quarter of the building was an old building, the other three quarters, you know, seventy-five, you know, it was three times bigger when we were done. And so and we had a hard time. I'm not even sure how we came down on that, but you know, I'm glad to hear John say they're keeping the existing building, they're keeping the interior that, even though that isn't in the purview. You know, I grew up in a beach shack as a kid, and I think they're sort of, they have a lot of, you know, they contribute, they have a lot of charm. I'm glad they're doing that. I I just think that I want to make sure, I think what's happening, and we see it with the with the HDC, we see it with the screening rules and the berms are being built and everything. Those were things that didn't happen previously. And it's over time, I think we've sort of changed the rules. I think the HCC is under, they have a ton of applications. There's a lot of pressure on these guys. I think over time, you you sort of forget that you have the jurisdiction on the size. You have jurisdiction that you people shouldn't be building on berms and, you know, and making their house bigger, taller than everybody else. They shouldn't be, you know, putting twelve foot, you know, walls in place. I mean, there's things that are there for a reason, and I think sometimes we get worn down and forget it. So, you know, so that's why I just wanted to, you know, just say that for now. Thank you.
I had some comments from McCracken. Am I allowed to read those?
We still, we have not closed the public hearing yet, so you can still make.
Can I go now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. This, these are, this is directly from Matt McCracken, and I should also point out that even though that, you know, the suggestion of building east to west or north to south, our building envelope is fairly small because we have a raised septic system. So we really don't have a lot of ability to to change it. And additionally, our house is angled on the property. But this is directly from Matt McCracken at Emeritus. The project program integrates the existing cottage in the design, so it may read as an additive massing element. We match the existing window style and simple exterior door and window trim detail on the addition to maintain the continuity of the existing detail architectural language. Regarding the massing, the massing scheme utilizes a mixture of one and two-story elements, specifically the second floor is all half-story with integrated dormers, with the remaining portion of the additions being single-story. Both the original cottage portion of the design and the added living area are one-story elements, which act as a drop to the scale of the structure and reflect the Nantucket vernacular of additive massing, a founding characteristic characteristic of Nantucket architecture. We attempted to tell a familiar historic story with the structure's design. The living room addition could have easily been an outbuilding on the property, a boathouse or an agricultural use that was then connected to the main house over time and used for living space. This concept was further supported by the integration of barn doors on the gable end of the addition. Finally, the exterior detail, the proposed rake and soffit details reflect the Walwinnit area, specifically flying rake with square cut rafter tails. The design utilizes cottage corners and crossbuck railings, all indicative of the Walwinnit and Sconsett vernacular. The base of the structure also has a shingle flare, which gives the structure some grounding and is indicative of classic shingle style. Thank you.
Ray, then Nicholas, then Rita.
One second. There we go. Thank you, Dawn. I just wanted to respond quickly to Matt's words and concerns. Part two of George Pucci's statement a few minutes ago was that if the board finds that it is contextual and that the size is appropriate for the neighborhood, then we're okay. And at no point did we ever feel like this building was overwhelming the context, to the contrary. As someone on this meeting pointed out recently, the next door neighbor, the appellant's house is twice as large. So and there's plenty of very, very large structures along that that streetscape and waterscape of Walwinnit. So that was all part of our review. And at the end of the day, we weren't capitulating to an applicant who is looking for a big building in a in a context of small buildings. The opposite is true. This is, this is a modestly scaled building, even though it's larger than the existing building. It's still contextual, and I think that was the point of what George just said. So thank you for having me.
Thank you. Nicholas?
Yeah, I just want to respond to a few of the comments. They stick to a similar idea. And that's to say that size is definitely within the HDC's purview. And the size of my client's house is not before the select board, and it wasn't before the HDC. My client's property is significantly larger than 112 Walwinnit Road, and as are many of the other properties to the south of 112 Walwinnit Road. This is what I was talking about earlier with the transition from out of town lots to in-town lots. The lots go from being a couple of acres down to under an acre. And when you start building larger homes on smaller lots, you run into the problem that Mr. Atherton alluded to before, where you're building out a lot completely from sideline to sideline. And that's what's happening here. And I think there is legitimate concern that that could keep happening, especially in the the center of Walwinnit Village where the lots are a smaller size. I also just had one procedural issue just for purposes of preserving an accurate record for appeal, and that was the statement that was read by Mr. Walker on behalf of Matt McCracken. I don't know if there's a way for Matt to mail a copy of that in or otherwise affirm his statement that was read into the record, because right now it's simply hearsay. And there, you know, could possibly be further appeal to superior courts on to make sure that the the record is complete for that purpose.
Thank you. Rita and then Stephen Welch.
Hey, I have a quick question. I think this applies to most neighborhoods, but every one of the HCC appeals that comes up, we talk about preserving the character of a neighborhood. Are each of the neighborhoods called out and described at some point in time what exactly that character is that we're preserving? Because it it seems like, and I see it again in this one where, and clearly we're doing it even now, we're looking at the houses next door. And in the packet, it shows houses that have had additive massing over time, so that now in twenty twenty, when we look at a smaller house like at 112 Walwinnit, it it is the smallest one in the block, so why wouldn't they be able to build bigger and it would be in keeping with the character of Walwinnit? But it just, it seems like there's this constant creep that we allow unless somewhere along the way, someone has said, this is the character of Matikit, this is the character of Walwinnit, this is what we're trying to preserve. And I actually don't know if we have that or how we judge what is the character that we're trying to preserve. Because if we keep looking next door and things keep changing, then we don't really have anything. I also wanted to ask Ray, it looked like there were some sight poles that were put up at one point and just wondering, was it the beach? Is it the beach view or the road view that has the greatest, that will have, will be impacted the greatest?
Ray, do you want to answer that?
Yeah. So this this property is certainly more visible from the beach than it is from the road. There's a lot of vegetation on the Walwinnit Road between where the proposed house is going and the road. But basically, the height poles are put up to allow us to judge the visibility from any vantage point. In this particular case, the greatest visibility would be from the beach. Hopefully, did that clarify things for you, Rita?
Yeah, and just is there something written in sort of preserving Nantucket? Is there anything written about what the character of each neighborhood is that we're trying to preserve?
No, and as you point out, that that is sort of a shifting thing. So the best way to describe this is, you know, when you drive to Quidnet, for example, there's a certain character and a certain, you know, traditional types of architecture that are used in Quidnet, which might be slightly different from the traditional types of architecture that you would find in Matikit or Walwinnit or wherever. So being responsive to the neighbors is is or the context is a positive thing, but as you point out, that's constantly changing, that's shifting.
Stephen Welch, you had had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I I've got a couple of quick comments. Erica, if I threw may through you, Madam Chair, ask her to pull up sheet one oh one from the packet. I would just, while that's being done, I wanted to mention with respect to Matt Fee's comments and Rick Atherton's. I think I certainly, and I don't want to speak for the commission as a whole, but we all have similar concerns. And we certainly support the spirit of those comments. And with respect to Rita's, one thing we struggle with is the context. This is and of a particular area, whether it's a street or a neighborhood setting or a rural open space. That's why I wanted to look at it if we could, page one oh one. And then just a couple of pictures of the house, because I'd like to just quickly touch on scales, square footage setbacks and the buffet. It sounds like a long list, but I'll be quick.
Erica, are you there?
I am, sorry.
Green sheer sheet one oh one of the packet.
Hold on one second. Let me try to find it. This one?
That's it, Erica. If you don't mind zooming in on just the sheet itself, the lower portion, the locus map, and a little bit more if it's possible, so that we can see the numbers. If not, that's okay. I can just describe.
I think this is as close as I can get.
Okay, that's helpful. So with respect to size, setbacks, scale and so on and so forth, and also lot size, 112 is the area that's shown highlighted in green with an outline. That's the particular property that's in front of you this evening. To the north of that is 114 and 116. And then, of course, 120, which is the Walwinnit house. You'll note that 114 and 116 are almost literally sideline to sideline with respect to their setbacks. Across the street, which is more of a smaller village setting, is 115, and there's a, there's a grouping of of structures there. And then 113, which again is is really development from almost from setback to setback. Would we have preferred that this was a small cottage and it was as close to the beach as they could get it under regulations? Fine. But it that's, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a say in what comes before us. We have to rule and make determinations and a ruling on what is presented, not what we wish was presented. So we worked with what we had with respect to the context, which shows other properties, their their setbacks, their scale. 112, if you focus on that lot again, is actually quite a large lot. To the south of that is 110, which is the appellants, and you'll note that on one side, it's literally on the setback. Whether that pushed 110 further to the south, I'm sorry, 108R up against their setback, I don't know. But we're basically working with what what we have. We did feel that the design with respect to square footage was appropriate. We spent a lot of time questioning both the applicant and the opponent and requesting information from town records on that topic. Erica, if you could flip to one third, page one thirty-nine. So with respect to the the concept of the buffet, I think is, I'm not suggesting it's misconstrued, but certainly misinterpreted. This is 116. Below it, the footprint, okay, so it says the footprint, 114. And Erica, if you wouldn't mind, just to continue to stroll and stop at the at the the second one down with the, yeah. So now, this is a home that was built in eighteen ninety. This is in what is being called the historic village of Walwinnit. It has very little of anything there that resembles an historic structure in Walwinnit, including the fact that the windows are mauled together, which is something that we don't in a historic structure is not typical. And there are also casement windows, which is something one of our members who, I think, John McGlaughlin says he's been on the HCC for fifty years, and I don't question that, is adamantly opposed to. If you could scroll down just a couple more, one more page. This gets to visibility in that area as viewed from the street, and this is the type of visibility, if not more limited, that we anticipate 112 will have in part because it has a small structure in front of it, and in part because it's far from the road, and in part because of the landscaping that will exist there. One more down, Erica. This is indicated is not visible from the street. However, this is a home, 104 Walwinnit. Certainly not what you would consider a traditional Quidnet-style historic structure, be it in Walwinnit or or in Quidnet. And although it's not this visible from the street, you do know that it's pink and it's there. So I just wanted to point out a little bit of context, because some, there's been some discussion about what the HCC did and didn't do and what we've been, what we considered and what we didn't consider. And I'd just like to assure the board that we considered this six ways to Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any further comments? I think it's, at this point, I'll close the public hearing, and then I'd like to hear from the board members. Whether it's in comments, Matt?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Rita asked if there's, you know, specifics, guidelines and built with Nantucket in mind, you know, for that area. There isn't, but there are specific guidelines of town versus sort of the outlying areas. So, you know, Sconsett or Quidnet or et cetera. And those, you know, if you look, and I actually looked at it this time before the meeting, just and and it's, if you look at Built with Nantucket in Mind, it's kind of quaint now. When you look at the houses and the amount of building that was on the island, they're in the pictures there. And if you look at sort of what we were trying to preserve then versus what we are facing now, it makes you realize we really do need to, you know, take a hard look at following what we meant to follow. And, you know, and that isn't a reflection on this this at all, but it's just answering your question. Yes, there are different standards for the different areas. Over time, you know, it talks about additive massing. Additive massing isn't adding three times as much of the building. Additive massing is you had a building, you added a war on it, and over time you added another war. And so this is where I said this was similar to Matikit. And Matikit was the same situation where it isn't additive massing anymore. It's something different, which we have to come to terms with. I'm, you know, I'm ha, the only, and the only question I had, well, we closed it, but was for Ray, right? Ray mentioned that there was, what did he say, listings that you use, like how, what's, you said there were two different listings that you use to know if something's contributing? Can he answer that? I felt like there was something you wanted to talk about that we should hear, but you didn't.
He didn't close the public hearing, but George, can Ray answer a direct question from the board?
Yeah, I think it would be fine, as long as you give, if, just give the opportunity to the opposing side if he needs to rebut whatever Ray says, I think would be sufficient.
Okay, Ray?
Yeah. So I'm not sure this is actually germane to this discussion, which is why I left it out, but there are there is what we call the Macris inventory of housing on Nantucket, and that is the one that has been around for years and years. And I'm sure you have a copy of it in in your packages. And I'm sure you have a copy of it in, in your packages. It goes into a great amount of detail about who the builder of the house was, the year that it was built, the roof type, all these different things. And then at the end, it sort of sums everything up with a few things about whether it's contributing, non-contributing, or in some cases, it's individually significant. Like the bricks would be individually significant. So this survey has the building as non-contributing, and the date of the initial construction was in 1970. And again, that, the source for that material was Jane Lamb, who, as you all know, lives at Chaos Corner and did a, you know, rather thorough documentation of the housing in Wawinnet. Now, that says opposed to the other survey that is called the Nantucket Survey Sheet. And it was actually sort of a spur off of the National, National Park Service. And it is, it is a, again, a survey of the houses on Nantucket. But it gives very little information. It gives the street address, it gives the map and parcel, it gives the year that the building was built, and then it says either C or NC. And in this case, the building was given a C, which means contributing. But I would add that Tristram's Landing, all of those condos that were built in Tristram's Landing in 1974, every single one of them on this inventory are considered contributing buildings. So I don't put a lot of stock in that inventory. I go with the one that's local and is thorough. So I'm not sure that's a point that needed to be made for this particular application, but it's something that, that we want to work on. Because the, the source material for the inventory that we use for our historic research is very important, of course. Matt, I hope I answered your question.
Thank you, Ray.
Thanks.
Nicholas, do you have a rebuttal to that that you wanted to make?
I don't. I would simply say that, you know, based on his comments, it sounds like there's some dispute about whether this is a contributing structure or not.
John, I'm sorry, I've closed the public hearing. And I saw that there, that Rick Atherton had raised his hand again, but it was after I closed the public hearing. Our board comments, board motions, thoughts, Rita?
My, to be honest, I think HDC, it looks like they spent a lot of time, I think, for this, taking various elements of this project into consideration. This particular project doesn't seem to me to have been an arbitrary decision. However, I do struggle and have struggled with, I think also what Matt is getting at, and this sort of idea that without some kind of baseline definition of what it is we're trying to preserve, that a lot of the decisions overwhelmingly are somewhat arbitrary. Because I just, I think about going back to Maticet, looking at some of the satellite images of Wawinnet. 20 years ago, the houses were probably smaller and a lot less white trim. They were more rural. And now here we are looking at, you know, using all these bigger houses that have been built on over the past 20 years and using those as our baseline. So it just seems like every time we look at this, every year, the baseline changes. So I, I don't really know what we're preserving, and it seems somewhat arbitrary. But I, I don't necessarily think in the context, in the smaller picture of this project, I think that, I don't think it was arbitrary. And just because it's my last meeting, I'm going to say my biggest concern is that this is still in the 25-foot buffer. And I understand it would have been grandfathered in. But I think that in terms of coastal erosion and coastal resiliency, grandfathering in projects that are in 25-foot buffers and 50-foot buffers is probably something we should consider in the future, and particularly building bigger mass in those buffers.
Jason or Kristin? Kristin?
I had similar feelings to Rita, where when looking at this, I didn't feel that the HDC was being arbitrary or capricious. I went out and kind of scoped out where this home is and the other things around it. And, you know, I came to the same conclusion that the HDC came to, which is that it fits in with the architecture and structures in that area. But I, I agree with Rita that if it keeps changing, it's this moving target. But I think that is a bigger discussion and not, not as, as much relevant to the single case.
Well said by Rita, thank you. I don't think that the HCC made an arbitrary, capricious decision. I'm ready to make a vote unless the board wants to keep discussing.
I'll just say that regardless, I mean, of any opinions that any of us have on this particular design, it is not within our role here to actually give it an architectural review. It's to review the process that the HDC went through, their deliberations, and whether they were arbitrary and capricious. It's a very difficult standard to actually come to the conclusion that they were arbitrary and capricious. They definitely had a very significant review process on this. And, and I feel like they did follow all of the rules. And, and I mean, on some of those other topics, I think those are important broader discussions. I think it's something that the HCC cares deeply about, all of the board members, on the context of how they review particularly historic structures. And, but I, I think in this case that they, they did their job correctly. And I always, you know, feel for neighbors who are concerned. But I don't, I don't believe that they were arbitrary and capricious. Matt, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support, you know, I'm, I'm in agreement with everybody. But I think the, the point that I, that we really need to come around to, and at some point, I think I'll start voting arbitrary and capricious, if we can't really, and it's, I can't put my finger on it, but, but Rita said it perfectly when she said eventually they all are. You know, I, I think at some point, there is, you know, there was, you know, back in the 70s, back when Jane Lamb did this, and we wrote the, the guidelines, et cetera, we were pretty clear. And over that time, it is, it slowly shifted. And I hope that the, you know, the, hopefully with the historic commission back active and the HDC engaged, I'm hoping that we start to really, you know, get a hand, get a handle back on those issues, because they're really, really important. And I think, you know, it, it's a slippery slope that we're, we've been heading down, and it's making some, some issues. But, you know, if Jason made a motion, I'll second it.
Jason, did you make that motion, or did you want to?
I'll make the motion to, to deny the appeal. The HCC did not make an arbitrary and capricious decision.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor by roll call vote? Matt Fee?
Aye.
Jason Bridges?
Aye.
Rita Higgins?
Aye.
Kristi Ferentzela?
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye. And George, you'll prepare a decision on that?
Yes, I'm happy to. Lately, Erica has been. Right after the next day, and they've been very good. But so it's totally up to you. I'm happy to do it, or I'm happy to look at Erica.
I can work with George on it tomorrow.
That's great, thank you. Thank you all. And we're, that, that's, that's the end of the deal for tonight.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. We have one item left on the agenda.
I'll say good evening, I'll leave you with John. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Okay, actually, I'm sorry, we have two items left on the agenda. But generally, these last two items are select board reports and comments. And tonight, for this discussion, I want, really want it to be between us as board members. And at this time, all other staff, the staff members are going to drop off, or at least close off their screens. And we're going to have a very true five-member board discussion on this issue and what we're feeling and what we think we might be able to accomplish in our, in our roles. Jason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to share my thoughts on this. So I know everything that we, we talk about, the select board, it has a great significance to our community. It's impactful. But I think, you know, sure, anything that I've said or will have said is, is gonna be harder than this. The reality that we, your select board has failed you, has failed the community, and we all know it. And I want to discuss how I think we failed. I think, I think we failed to acknowledge the severity of the, of the pain resulted from the racist defacing and hate crime of the African Meeting House. I think we failed to provide opportunities for our community to voice their concerns and their frustrations. There's no space, we could have done that. Failed to recognize that an independent body should have been brought into, into manage the investigation as soon as there was a suggestion that there might be any conflict of interest. And I know a lot of this is hindsight, but I think we failed. We failed to ask and provide transparency throughout the investigation in order to keep our community up to date. So we could show them that, that we could see that they were in pain. So I wanted to apologize to our community, to our, our Black community, to our community of color, to Rosemarie, for people that I did not reach out to after the African Meeting House incident happened. I want, I want to commit to, to being able to sit in that discomfort and fear and reaching out to people and, and hearing their stories, our community of color. I think this, I need to do that, I think.
Can improve things, because I don't think that I know enough on, on what actually works. I mean, when, when we're talking about race issues, we're talking about hundreds of years of oppressive behavior. And I, I need to hear very directly from Nantucket citizens. Obviously, anyone is welcome to reach out to me independently. But I also want to somehow create a space where people can really feel that they can come and be heard without any repercussions. And, and yeah, I mean, I'm putting it out there that I'm looking for input. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm very sorry that anyone felt that, that I was ever dismissive in any way. And, and I feel terrible that there, there's no, that there hasn't been a final resolution on Christopher's accident. It is something that I've, I've checked up on because with, through my own children, I asked, is Christopher okay? After it happened, I didn't reach out directly to Rosemarie. That was a question that someone sent me in an email after, after the, after the, the car incident. And I'm just, I'm running on. And Matt, you had your hand up?
Yeah, it, I think it would be, you know, presumptuous of me to, to say how people, other people should feel or what we should do, or I think it's, but, but I think Jason was right earlier when he's talking about, you know, listening to people. You know, a lot of people have reached out to us and said, what are you gonna do? How are you gonna fix this? How are you gonna do that? Well, some of it, I think people have to realize, we don't have control of. We've handed some of this off to, you know, because of the issues that we're dealing with, we've handed it off to the Attorney General. It's, it's being dealt with, and we're being asked for questions that we can't answer yet. But, and I, but I, but I think the things we can do is, is what Jason was saying, is to listen to people and to, you know, and to then gather the information and then do the right things, you know? But people asking me personally now, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna do this, are you gonna do that? I, I think we've got to figure out what the right thing to do is first. And that's gonna take what Jason's talking about, the hearing and understanding. And I don't think it's appropriate for me to be, you know, sort of pontificating about some of this stuff, you know? It, it would be, it's near impossible for me to understand whether someone else's view is from. And I think we need to understand that and understand, you know, what, how that may, how that can be improved, and then go from there. I know you've talked about a forearm or doing something like that. I think if, that will be difficult and uncomfortable and tough to do. But I think if it can be done from the right place with the right intent and not, you know, not a gotcha moment, or, you know, not, you know, if it was done when we're trying, I think it could be very helpful.
Kristin?
Yeah, I, I think a lot of things have been said that I was gonna mention. I think it's really important for a select board to take a step back and really listen. I think a lot of us are action-oriented, wanting, wanting to help, wanting to fix things, wanting to jump in. And we, we can't do that in this space. We, we need to create the space where our community of color and our Black and Brown community members can come in and tell us what they need and tell the, tell us, you know, what they experience as a resident of Nantucket or visitor of Nantucket. And we can't, I feel like if we jump to conclusions or jump to solutions of how we can, you know, quote, fix this, you know, we're just gonna put our white perspective and, you know, put a Band-Aid over the problem and not actually create meaningful change for our community. So I think that's something that I've been really working on, is, is listening more and learning more and reading more. And, and I think all of us have to do that. So I really think creating a space, whether that's part of a, a select board meeting or a community forum, or it's held by the Civic League, or, you know, some space where we can have these conversations. And I think Matt, you know, really got to that point of not to say gotcha, or, you know, for us to defend anything. Every time we talk about things, it's, it's, you know, either you support the Black community, you support the police. And I don't think it's an either or, it's an and, and how do we have those conversations? Or we don't just defend everything, or, you know, we get really defensive and it's uncomfortable, and we need to work past that. So just, I, I think we're gonna mess up along the way. But the more that we can bring in voices of our community and have these really open, vulnerable and uncomfortable situations, that's the only way that we're gonna drive meaningful change for our community.
Rita?
Kristi, your last point there is one that has really hit me, looking at, seeing some of the images coming from the protest and getting the sense that there's a real us versus them, coming from police, coming from government. And even the last meeting, the March 11th meeting, that was, that was a moment when I had an us versus them. And I think the select board, we were caught, we've, we were in the middle of this, where we're both working with the town and for the town, and we're also citizens and we're elected representatives. And I, I just, as we've had emails coming in, as people have been watching the video from that meeting, I just have this sense of, we have to figure out how to get over this us versus them and, you know, not worrying about stepping on toes and hurting feelings within the government. You know, we're all in this together. And a couple of emails that have come in where it wasn't just about, you know, how we did fail the community, and we failed Rosemarie, and we failed the community at large, and the community of people of color in Nantucket, were the, the emails that sort of gave us these long lists of things that they thought that we could do. And I, I think that, again, I'm, I'm on the select board, but a citizen first, as are our policemen and our town administration. And I think for me, that's one of the biggest barriers at the moment nationally and locally. As regards moving forward, I, I think there's, there's sort of two issues at the moment. One is trust of our police department. And then the other is the overarching discussion about racism on the island, racism everywhere in this country. I, I do think after the meeting on March 11th, I did look into what happens when you feel like you've hit the end of the road with getting answers, or you feel like your civil rights have been impacted. Where do you go, what do you do? And I think that that's, you know, I, I think that's something, it's, unfortunately, there's more people that have probably felt like that. And I think that in terms of looking towards solutions, I think when it comes to not trusting. I think when it comes to not trusting police departments, unfortunately, that's something that is common throughout the country. And I think there are steps that we can take, um, having the ability for people to lodge anonymous complaints, considering a citizens review board, um, and making sure that people understand where the resources are if they feel that their select board, their town administration and their police department aren't aren't providing what they need. So I I think helping people to understand what their rights are as well as feeling that there's a level of transparency and um, and oversight over the police department. I completely agree with all of you in that we have to listen. It's been brought up many times that we are an all-white board. I've really, um, over the past week, you know, really tried to understand the things that I've sort of accepted a status quo as part of my privileges being white and also having a platform here. So I think we have a lot of listening to do. I don't know what exactly we need to do other than, you know, organize a way to have these listening sessions, continue to keep this at the forefront of um, our meetings and discussion at the town level. But I did think about how we get things done. And I, as I was thinking about, you know, much like probably everyone on this board, people have been asking us, what are you going to do? That we don't know yet, but how are we going to do it? And I thought about how, as a board, over the past three years, we've gotten things done. And it's through our strategic plan. And I started thinking about how, um, you know, it seems a little bit foolish now to think that we can have a strategic plan that focuses so much time and energy and resources on things like that things that are important to me, like water quality, affordable housing and paid parking, maybe a little less important to me, but it is important. When we don't even have a foundational level of of equity. And, you know, it seems silly to say, well, there's not enough time to focus on that because that's what the strategic plan has done for us. It's allowed us to focus our time and energy. And I I think that, you know, there's really no excuse. There's nothing that I could honestly say is, well, there's not enough time to focus on racism and social equity. So I think looking to our strategic plan as part of the how, and I think we've added quality of life. And if we don't have equity underpinning our strategic plan as its own thing, then I I think this board, you know, could consider um, looking at quality of life. And what does quality of life mean? Not as regards there's too many roundabouts or rotaries, not as there's too much traffic. But um, how, what is your quality of life like here if you don't feel like you are seen as an equal? So I think that there's a how, um, one of the houses through our strategic plan because it's been very powerful and it's allowed this board to be, um, I think cohesive in a way that we haven't, we weren't able to before, in our cohesive in our decision making.
Matt.
Rita, you can't leave. You're not allowed to step down, just so you know that. Yeah, the other thing I think as a as the board, we have to remember is when people come under public comment and something, you know, and they aren't getting anywhere with the government, that, you know, we are not staff, we are not the administration. You know, we are sort of, we are the, you know, we are there to make sure that they are doing their job properly. And I think sometimes we forget our role and sometimes we are too much, you know, walk too much in lockstep with the town administration. And I know I, you know, I bucket more than most of you, but I think that it's something that we have to become more comfortable with. And when something is brought to our attention that warrants, you know, investigation and warrants, you know, a response, we need to, you know, all of us, we need to hold the chair and the co-chair and all of us a candle to make sure that we follow those things up. Because, you know, if we don't, then eventually, you know, if you don't pay attention to a problem, it's just gonna get worse. It might be two years, five years, but eventually it comes back even and bites you harder. And I think this is one situation where it where it has and continues to. And so I think, you know, the this board now with without Rita with, you know, that we have to make sure that we really, uh, you know, remember that we we're what we should be doing.
Yeah, I mean, one thing I realized with a lot of these comments in regard to like the public comment forum. I mean, it's, that's always been a difficult thing, thing for me because we generally take in the information and don't respond to it during the meeting because it's not an agenda item. And um, definitely need to have the um, the follow-up with the people that do come and speak. And I think most of the time that happens, but we we've, you know, probably need to have a slightly more defined process to absolutely make sure that that happens. But anyway, I don't want to just start trying to to be a fixer. I want to, I mean, in this conversation, I really want to be a listener. Jason.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I like that we can, the five of us can just talk about this and not have to come up with a an agenda item or a motion. We can just talk. But so I wanted to share something with the four of you that um, that that's been in my head. So after the March 11th meeting, at fifteen hundred times, I thought, what, I I could have done something differently. I I've been trying to do the work. I I I knew I could have said this and and that was all in my head. What could I have done? So I had the guilt and the shame of something that I didn't do or could have done differently. And with a lot of reflection and a lot of help from talking to a lot of community members, I learned that I need to move that away from poor me or, you know, what? You know, honor that guilt and shame and switch it to, how was Rosemarie feeling? How were the people that I didn't reach out to? How are they feeling? How how can I make, uh, how can I listen better and learn? And kind of get out of my own head and my own, in that framework. And I, once I reframed that, it helped me to engage and to 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 be able to listen or or start that journey of listening and learning. And I just think if we can do more of that, then we can acknowledge what has happened and where we've been this last year or two, then we really can go forward and, you know, with the right mindset and the right heart and 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 take action and and start this process. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason. Um, Rita.
Yeah, I I had another thought. Um, and Jason, you sort of are touching on it there. And and as I won't be on the board, thinking about, you know, what can I do once I'm not on the board? And I think, you know, the fact that that meeting was one of our biggest failures and my biggest failures as a select board and is there in perpetuity on YouTube for people to watch, it's really struck me. On one hand, it's horrible that that moment has been captured and can be replayed. But even seeing, knowing that people have been watching that and getting involved, that's a form of getting involved and knowing that, um, you know, I think going forward, just really encouraging people to watch us and, you know, call us out when there's things that we're not doing, that you don't feel represented. And we've had such an uptick of people watching the meetings as a result of COVID. I, you know, I hope that goes forward. It's really important because there are clearly really important things happening at meetings that, um, you know, we we need people watching and participating. And um, and I think going forward as well, the select board, you know, when I ran for a select board, I saw Dawn on the board and I never thought about it for two seconds about whether or not, uh, as a woman, you could run. And I think it is much, I think Kristi, you're the 12th woman in the history of Nantucket. And I was the 11th and Dawn's the 10th. So five years prior, you know, you look at a board that is all male and some people might say, um, you know, some women might feel like they couldn't run because it's all male. And I think to your point, Jason, people looking at our board and saying, it's an all-white board. You know, how would I get elected? How am I welcome? And that's come up before before with the committees and commissions is how do we make sure that people know that they are, they can be a part of this. And, you know, we focused at one point on some of the language barriers, but there's, um, there's just simple race barriers. And I think now with three women on the board, we've sort of worked, um, you know, we've worked through some of the um, the issues around uh, women and women participating. And I don't think any woman can question now whether or not she can be on the select board. But I do think people of color probably still still ask that question. And so I think finding ways to to um, make everyone feel welcome and like they can participate and have a platform and be in a position of authority on Nantucket, whether it's through the select board or through other committees and commissions.
Um, so I wanted to just, you know, really keep this a very informal conversation tonight. I think that we that we do want to um, to work further on some some tasks that the select board can help facilitate. But right now, I'm I'm kind of putting out there, I want to hear more from the community on what they think would make sense. And I mean, whether email or phone call or direct conversation, socially properly socially distanced is what works right now. I mean, I I just, I think I would just want to say to everyone, reach out to any one of us that you feel comfortable reaching out to or multiples of us and um, and give us your input because we don't know everything that we don't know and we are not a racially diverse board, as has been brought up quite a bit. Rita.
I have one last request for an agenda item then, that uh, maybe in two weeks. Uh, because I I I think it's um, uh, just, I don't want, because we sort of nebulous how we're going to collect this information, just that this come up again and we look at what sort of feedback we've gotten. And maybe there's something more definitive that we can we can organize. Or maybe there's something coming from the community that we can support and be a part of.
Um, definitely. I I am going to say, two weeks from now, this is an agenda item. And I mean, I think that we will probably discuss something along the lines of a task force. But I just, I really want input on what the, what kind, what kind of the, what the needs are, what the steps would be. And I I want to hear that from people who have a clearer understanding of um, of how they feel like that they've, that they've not been supported by the community, that they've been been wronged by a certain people or things. And um, I think it's important to gather that kind of information and listen before we jump to the fix fixing steps. And I mean, I think that Rachel Day, the Assistant Town Manager, is on board to help lead something. And we have um, Taylor Hiltz, um, who's our Human Services Director. And so things are already being talked about, but I don't want to commit to actions without hearing from more people what what um, what all of the concerns are and what what would help that that is within something that we can help facilitate. Kristi.
I think that's a really good way to move forward. I know that in a lot of conversations I was having this week, um, you know, a lot of focus right now is around police brutality. And I kept kind of, you know, trying to frame what are the issues that we're trying to fix. And that's, I think, the question that we need to gather information on is what what are the biggest concerns from our community of color? Is it our education? Is it our health system? Is it our police department? And then we can kind of move forward from there, but trying to understand what are the issues? That's that's where we really need that community input.
Um, I wasn't going to get into a lot of public comments tonight, but I do have one person with her hand raised. So um, I I'd like to allow her in. Christina. And then I'll go to you, Jason. Christina, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Can you?
A big purple C, but we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Christina Nyhan. I live at 11 Mismast Seasonally. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I just um, obviously have been following the news and also the comments online, the petitions and various conversations that are being held within the community. I have two kind of called actions, um, which resulted as a, the fact that you say it is that you want to give this time to really like listen and talk. But there's obviously a big disconnect between the community and necessarily feeling safe or feeling comfortable to do that. So um, there's two calls of action that I would an election is coming up for the Board of Select, the Select Board. And I um, would encourage any um, black person or a person of color to run a great time to be heard. And secondly, um, I do think that we need as a community to um, to gather. Uh, there's been a couple of smaller um, gatherings. This is a perfect time. And I think we've seen on the news how powerful gatherings can be. And it's a really like amazing um, way to bond the community and for the uh, people who don't necessarily feel safe to realize that they are safe and that they have a voice. Not sure how exactly that would get formed, but I know also I drive by the Meeting House, the African Meeting House, four or five times a day and it's just sitting there very quietly. And I think this is a great time for us to gather there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason.
I think I was going to I was really listening to Christina, Christina, and I lost my 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 train of thought. I should have wrote it down. But I think I was going to address having, at some point, if the community wants this, to have a an off-island facilitator, an organization that does this kind of work, come in and help us. From what Christina said, people don't feel safe and there's disconnect there. And so how do we, how do we create that space? And I know that's what you're asking for, Dawn, is what we do. I know there's some organizations that are working on that right now. So I'm hopefully next week, I I know you guys said maybe two weeks from now, maybe we could have an update next week. That gives us enough time. Thanks.
Um, yeah, I think that this could be a continuing agenda item in the in this kind of format. And then we'll put something a little bit more concrete together. Kristi.
I just wanted to follow up to Christina's comment about gatherings. And there is going to be a gathering this Friday at 5:00 PM on Main Street for anybody who would like to attend.
So let's add this again for next week. And um, we'll um, we'll just have some updates and we'll maybe get a little bit closer to some potential action items as we we formulate and and hear from more people. Are there any committee reports? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Jason.
Really quick, um, I know we've already said our our words, some of us to read it, but I uh, I just want to say how much I enjoy enjoyed listening to you. And, you know, we have kind of evolved together in our three years, going, you know, being elected at the same time. And um, it's it's just been, it's been a joy being, having arguments with you and having, you know, pints with you at Kitty's, you know, arguing over our different different items after meetings. And I know we can still do that, but I'm gonna, you know, I really appreciate those times and the time you've given to me and the time you've given to the community. You've been a very sound and balanced and thoughtful voice. And I hope I can pull a little bit away from you if I get a chance to do this again. So thank you, Rita.
Thanks, Jason. Again, I will miss you guys. Might take me two weeks, I think, to really miss you. But uh, um, no, it has been eye opening, I um, to really understand how the town works. And I I credit all of you with um, the amount of time everyone puts in. Again, we don't always do things right and we definitely don't always agree. But um, the amount of effort that every single one of you has put in is amazing. is amazing. And I'm very, at this point, still thankful for this form of government to have the opportunity to be able to participate like this and feel like I can make a bit of a difference on Nantucket. So just don't forget coastal resiliency either. Those are my parting words.
Don't forget that you can volunteer again.
I just might need a little time on the sideline first, so.
Just a little.
I'll I'll make a motion to adjourn as my for my final meeting here.
Thanks, Rita. The second by roll call, Matt Faye.
Aye.
Jason Bridges.
Aye.
Rita Higgins.
Aye.
Kristi Garantella.
Aye.
John Holgate, aye.